When I try to do that, I'm later.
Oh, because you know.
This is real time.
Yeah, it works for me most of the time. The health.
Wait, that one?
The new one.
Are these like controlled in that?
Yeah, our departments on there.
It hasn't been changed originally.
Sure, it's our department, yeah. I'm more the academic side. That's great. Yeah, we have our faculty meetings. I'm sure my chair knows, but it's great.
I know there were these like five years.
Yeah, hearing, we do hearing aids, we see everything. Young children, adults, all crazy. Communication disorders. It's a real jam, actually. What did you see?
Well, it's an iPhone thing.
No, I see. All the students were gone, so I saw our owners.
Yeah, you got it.
Yeah.
Right, we'll try it.
He basically told me what I already knew, is that I have some hearing loss this year.
That's pretty cool.
So I have really high frequency hearing loss this year. And then I have coming and going tinnitus this year, which she was amazed at when it comes. Yeah, sometimes it's not quite.
I think it has some new therapy for tinnitus.
It's very effective and not very.
Who just, who come in, and they're playing a good shot. Like a big jar and they scare the patients and they're like, like rampant. It's like a generation.
If they're listening to it loud enough.
It's a significant change, like all of them are like. We'll see in 10 years.
Why is it so crowded? Is this a pass?
I guess a lot of it's for the swearing here.
Oh, thank you, Joe.
How's your inclination?
Just two buildings. Although I wait, I've got to until about four.
Can we have roll call to start the meeting?
Mr. Pitherich?
Here.
Mr. Bracken?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Ms. Franklin?
Here.
Vice Mayor Ragoo?
Here.
And then I'll stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Can we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So we'll move into public participation, we have something exciting.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor and members of council. First, I want to thank you for allowing us to have this opportunity to take some time to swear in our next police sergeant in this public forum. As I mentioned a couple of months ago, when we sworn in a new lieutenant, the police division's undergoing a tremendous change this year as we begin promoting people, moving people to different positions, changing assignments, and moving schedules around. So today's ceremony is no different, and as we prepare to swear in our next police sergeant. But first, I want to talk a little bit about the importance of the police sergeant in the organization for our agency. The police sergeant's the first line supervisor. They produce the actual public safety work product that's delivered to the citizens. I could probably argue that it's one of the, it is the most important position in some ways. They model the ethical behavior for the officers, they ensure accountability and the performance objectives are met. And much like a symphony conductor, they can either enhance or weaken the community's perception of the professionalism of a department. So, once promoted, the police sergeant must instantly become a leader. The expectations are high, and there's a great deal of responsibility that's vested in a new sergeant. So this is a very important position for us. We have six police sergeants in our organizational chart. And fortunately, we have a great candidate who's up for this task. So after a very rigorous process, the city manager has appointed Anthony Jones Jr. to the position of police sergeant, and I'd ask him to come up to the podium now. So Sergeant Anthony Jones, who we all know as AJ. He served with OPD since 2017. He possesses probably the most well-rounded and unique experience of our candidates this time for sergeant. He served as a field training officer, a recruitment team member, bike patrol, an explorers advisor, and as an agent on the burn task force. So in his role at the Butler undercover regional narcotics task force for the last two years, he worked independently without constant oversight. He worked for many different agencies on the local, state, and federal level, and overall represented OPD very well. And because of the assignment he was in, that's why you really didn't see him in the community very much the last few years, so. Anthony possesses a bachelor's degree from Ohio State in criminology, and he's represented the bargaining unit as a labor rep for Lodge 38. Prior to Oxford PD, he was a corrections officer at the Hamilton County Sheriff's Office. Anthony has strong communication skills and certainly is already a leader amongst his peers, so he's very much an informal leader at OPD. So without further ado, I'd ask the law director to come up to administer the oath of office.
You can raise your right hand, please. I, Anthony Jones Jr.
I, Anthony Jones Jr.
solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States and the state of Ohio.
Of the United States and the state of Ohio.
And I will obey the laws thereof.
And will obey the laws thereof.
And that I will in all respects.
And that I will in all respects.
uphold and enforce.
Uphold and enforce.
provisions of the charter.
The provisions of the charter.
And the ordinances of the city of Oxford.
And the ordinances of the city of Oxford.
And will faithfully discharge.
And will faithfully discharge.
the duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
of police sergeant.
Of police sergeant.
of which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
I pledge to enforce the laws.
I pledge to enforce the laws.
of the city of Oxford.
Of the city of Oxford.
and the state of Ohio.
And the state of Ohio.
impartially and with integrity.
Impartially and with integrity.
never using.
Never using.
my authority.
My authority.
for personal or private motives.
For personal or private motives.
but applying.
But applying.
the law fairly and equally.
The law fairly and equally.
to all persons.
To all persons.
solemnly.
So, pardon me, solely. Solely.
in the interest of the public peace.
In the interest of the public peace.
safety and welfare.
Safety and welfare.
And I further pledge.
And I further pledge.
to so conduct myself.
To so conduct myself.
as to bring credit.
As to bring credit.
to the police division.
To the police division.
of the city of Oxford at all times.
Of the city of Oxford at all times.
Congratulations, and let me say. I think you've got something else coming.
So Anthony's joined here tonight by his wife Celia, son Carter, who's nine months, I think you said, and his parents. It's a notable time in our history here at Oxford PD as it's the first time an African-American officer has achieved the rank of sergeant. So I think that's worth noting. And we're honored to have that be AJ, and we look forward to his leadership and expanding on the leadership he already provides. So he's going to wear badge 34, and here to pin the badge is your wife? Okay, I wasn't sure, I forgot to ask. No staffers. Congratulations.
Thank you. I'd like to thank Chief Jones, Lieutenant Robinson, and Lieutenant Price for giving me this opportunity. I'm really excited to take on these new challenges. I know I've been away from the city for the past couple of years, so it's exciting to be back and ready to work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you so much, congratulations, and we're very lucky to have you. So it sounds like there's OPD photos happening out front? Okay, and then we'll move on to a proclamation for Oxford Historic Preservation Day. Whereas historic preservation is an effective tool for managing growth and sustainable development, revitalizing neighborhoods, fostering local pride, and maintaining community character while enhancing livability, and whereas historic preservation is relevant for communities across the nation, both urban and rural, and for Americans of all ages, all walks of life, and all ethnic backgrounds, and whereas it is important to celebrate the role of history in our lives and the contributions made by dedicated individuals in helping to preserve the tangible aspects of the heritage that shaped us as a people, and whereas harnessing the power of place is the theme for National Preservation Month, May 2025, co-sponsored by the City of Oxford and the National Trust for Historic Preservation, and whereas on Wednesday, May 28, there will be a day of activities celebrating historic sites in Oxford, offering interior tours and recognizing property owners who have led by example. Now therefore, I, Chantel El Ragoo, Vice Mayor of the City of Oxford, Ohio, do hereby proclaim May 28, 2025, as Oxford Historic Preservation Day, and call upon the people of Oxford to join their fellow citizens across the United States in recognizing and participating in this special observance. And then I know we have a wonderful board member from HPAC, Aaliyah, to accept the proclamation. Okay, we can move on to public comments. Anyone who wants to comment on anything that is not on the agenda, this is your time. You'll have five minutes. I'll give you a warning when you're at four minutes. Nope, just someone running away. Seeing none, may we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Are there, sorry, are there any items to be removed? No, all in favor? Okay, great. All right, so now we can move on to our resolution. A resolution authorizing the city manager to waive fees adopted in the fee ordinance for the street closures and parking meter costs for the Oxford Chamber of Commerce for the 2025 Annual Oxford Wine and Craft Beer Festival. Do you have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Great, Jessica?
Good evening. Let me pull up my staff report real quick, one moment. In 2024, the Chamber of Commerce expanded its wine festival to include a high street closure. This prompted the need for several parking meters for an entire day. They requested a waiver of all parking and road closure fees in 2024, and council did grant it. For this year, they're asking for the same area and again requesting a waiver of road closures and parking fees. They need 150 parking spots at $12 a day, which is $1,800, and two road closures at $150 each, which is $300, for a total waiver request of $2,100. These large, one-day events are extremely staff-intensive and close the Uptown area for an entire day. Staff fully support the wine festival and the creative placemaking it brings to our community. However, there are concerns regarding the equal treatment of nonprofits seeking the waiver of fees for their one-day annual event. We do not have a clear system for when to say yes or no to waiver of fees. What event is worthy of a waiver? The parking fees are paid toward the repayment of the loan for the parking garage from the Capital Improvement Fund, as well as for the garage's maintenance. Currently, the city still owes $440,000 toward the garage loan and has paid over $1 million in its upkeep last year. The city does waive fees for weekly events that are a few hours in length, and these include the summer music hosted by Enjoy Oxford, and their main street closure, and a few parking spots for their bands, and the farmer's market hosted by the Oxford Farmer's Market and their use of the Uptown Surface Lot, and during busy seasons, also the closure of East Park Place. We just wanted to bring this to your attention for discussion, and I'm happy to answer your questions, or also, I think Chief Jones or Mike could also answer questions. Thank you. And Kelly, I believe from the chamber is also here.
Would Kelly count as the public, a public comment? Okay, all right, do you have any public comments? Great, and you all have five minutes. I'll give you a warning at four minutes.
Okay, thank you. For those of you that don't know me, I'm Kelly Riggs with the Oxford Chamber of Commerce. Thank you for allowing me to come and speak beyond, on behalf of the Oxford Wine and Craft Beer Festival for the chamber. As you know, we've worked closely with the city of Oxford on many of events, as far as Oxtoberfest, now recently the Bee Festival, and with the Oxford Wine and Craft Beer Festival coming up on Saturday, May 31st, we'd also like to, as Jessica mentioned, request the waiver of fees for street closures and parking meters for having high street again. And of course, as, so just like last year, you know, we'd be paying for the police officers, and we also know of the new policies with the food trucks, and we've been telling everyone that they have to go do that. And then we also, I'm doing my safety training with, I know the new safety rules that's coming out for blocking the streets and everything for events. I'm doing that Thursday. I think it's been, I think everybody that came and attended the wine festival last year had to notice how well it was received as far as having more space for our vendors, having a safer, larger area for people to be able to get around a lot better than what they were just in the small part of the park. So, and the chamber wants to continue to work very closely with the city of Oxford and maintain the city of Oxford as a sustaining sponsor and trade for doing this for us. So if you would consider doing that for us again, we would greatly appreciate it. And if anybody's got any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you, Kelly. Any other public comments? Seeing none, council discussion?
I was just going to ask, what's our date this year?
Saturday, May 31st.
Okay.
I appreciate, I mean, this is about this individual thing, but I can see some signaling from staff, like, ah, there's some complexities to this. And I, we talked about this before, and I really would like to think that we could come up with a simple rubric that weighs the cost and benefits of these events. I mean, I think we can estimate the costs, as we talked about the extra police staff things paid for separately. You know, a parking spot, you know, is it going to generate $12 a day in the summer? It's hard to know, but we can estimate the costs and know them pretty confidently. The benefits are a little bit harder, but I think we know, you know, from the visitation of the Wine and Beer Festival that it's drawing people to our community. And in addition to enlivening it for residents, and so I can imagine that we could have some simple rubric to weigh different requests in terms of their relative cost and benefits. How many parking spaces are we talking about, and how much projected benefit? So I, I mean, I think this is about this individual event, but I can sense from the staff report that staff is looking for guidance. I too hate to do things one at a time, and, I mean, Jessica, what are your thoughts on, like, if there's guidance and a system, who are the right people to do there? Is it board a commission, or a subcommittee of people who can come up with some simple rubric that enables us to evaluate applications?
I would, on the fly, state that a simple rubric has been proven, has proven difficult. We haven't found a simple rubric, otherwise we would have recommended it to council already. And so the challenge then becomes, what criteria do we use, and what do we look at? And I don't have a simple answer. I love these events, you guys know I'm an event supporter, and I love creative placemaking. But I also acknowledge the staff time and expense and how hard they are. And so I don't have an answer, which is why I think we are bringing it to council, but would love, you know, council thoughts on next steps, and if my coworkers want to chime in, feel free, but those are my initial thoughts.
One of the problems is that the city has two events, Oxtoberfest, and then this year, the Bee Festival. I don't believe we charged ourself, you know, because that'd be taking it out of one pocket, put it in the other pocket of the same pants. So, you know, there's that issue. You know, so even if you charge the full amount or half amount, I think they can raise the question, well, you know, the city's not charging itself. Now, if we did, it would, maybe it should go in the parking fund, and, you know, but that would add to the cost of those two events. So, yeah, it's been difficult. We had some good discussion at staff meeting on it, and, you know, we decided to bring it to council, just to kind of share with you our concern.
I'd just like to think that, I mean, it will still be a subjective decision. We won't have a rubric that will make the decision for us, but I think if we have, like, the chamber with an event that draws thousands of people, and we can estimate the economic impact probably roughly versus a group who's contributes, you know, that hits on, has lower visitation or hits on other values that are not as important, we should be able to say no to somebody. And so I don't know whether it's the Parking Transportation Advisory Board, or some group of people. I think it would just be nice to have some guardrails to help us weigh, at least among wildly different requests.
I'm not sure if this would work. I think it's easy to come up with a rubric, and then it's very hard to fill in that rubric because it's so subjective or speculative as towards the economic and community benefits. And we're worried about it running away, in which our resources and money is taken up because we have so many things coming in. One way to resolve that might be to do a fixed number of slots or days, and that prioritization of what's best, because there's lots of great charities out there, but also we can't have them taking up all of the resources for this too often. So maybe that's one way to approach it, throwing that out there.
Were you going to say something, Chief?
I think one of the main staff concerns is that we have other people that we know are going to come forward and, you know, request the same thing, especially when we granted it last year to the chamber. We granted it last year to the Masonic Lodge. They did a car show on Sunday. This year, they're planning to do it on a Saturday. So a Saturday, you know, Sunday, the meters are free, you're not really losing revenue. And then also, we have the Porsche show, and the Porsche show takes up the same footprint, but they pay for all their parking spaces. I asked for some data, you know, we have these smart meters that we can kind of gather. Now, this isn't just for High Street, this was for, like, different Saturdays in, you know, May, after students have left, and Saturdays in June. And you're talking anywhere between $1,300 and $1,900 on a Saturday that were drawn in in parking revenue.
From all the meters.
From all the meters. Yeah, so, you know, that's what, that's what we're losing. We're not losing all of that. But I think the issue isn't as much for me about revenue, it's just about fairness. And are we gonna, which events get it, which events don't? So, that's from my standpoint.
I mean, I feel like this is not something we're going to be able to work through in a conversation, but I think Jason, like, I think a variety of rubric, or some set number of permits per year, that could be a lottery, that could be waived. If this is a problem moving forward, I, like, who do we charge to just work it through and come up with a system that we can try to operate with? We're not going to do it tonight, but I think it's worth investing the timing because we're going to have this conversation over and over again.
Can you remind me again how many years this festival's been happening?
Eighteen.
The rule should be the 18th, the dude COVID.
Right.
Okay, gotcha. And it's grown every year, right?
It's grown every year.
And then when were the fees first waived?
Last year was the first time we asked.
Okay.
But last year was the first year it took up the high street.
The whole street, yeah.
It didn't always take up the whole of High Street.
So it's grown, so we've drawn in.
We still pay for meters. We, throughout parking, like Lot 52, because we use that, but it's definitely grown. And we even bought, like, caution tape, this, you know, the way we're going to set up is the caution tape around, sort of broke off our area, or the liquor permit is also at Oxford Wine and Craft Beer Festival, but our local businesses are open, please visit. You know, so we're not trying to take away from our business if I like. Local High Street as well.
So the cost is about $1,200 then? Is that fair to say that we would be waiving?
I think it's listed in the.
Yeah.
The waiver request is $2,100.
Okay. I think it's so challenging, because we all love the chamber, and we all love you, you know? And I do, it is a struggle when it comes to fairness, because we're, it's all our neighbors that come up and are going to ask us, you know, can we waive this? So, and then we're all going to say, sure. And I think that personally, we all rely on this, especially admin and staff, to tell us what the fiscal responsibility part is. So it's a struggle to say, well, y'all are kicking butt and growing every single year. Like, it is a great event. It's hard to say, okay, why in the 18th year, when it's bigger, does it need that type of forgiveness when it didn't? I know it wasn't as big, right, there aren't as many parking spots, but it's a good problem, right, because y'all have grown so much, and it's a great event. It's hard to say, like, why now, whenever we're worried about, I mean, what we're voting on now at the State House and the struggles that we're going to have, I think it's hard to say, just in fairness, it's hard for me personally to say that this is something we should judge on a one-by-one basis, whenever we just have to think about the whole city for the whole year.
I lean towards not waiving it, but then we also charge ourself for our events. Take it out of the general fund, we put it in the parking fund, you know, because why do we waive our own fee? And, you know, so that's just one thought. I mean, not a simple solution, but, you know, that way we can feel comfortable with the Porsche show and the other car show, because unless they do it on Sunday, which they're not planning on it this year, the Porsche have always paid their parking fee. So maybe that's one answer.
And it is an incentive to having an event on a day in which the parking is already free, if an organization wanted to do that, just like. if an organization wanted to do that, just like any type of event planning and you pick an off-peak day. Not that we would want that for this event because it's great on a Saturday. But it is challenging whenever we hear multiple staff say that they're concerned about the fairness and what's gonna happen going forward and the fact that the event is so great on its own and it's in its eighteenth year. I think it's hard to think about what will come next if we continue to do this as a one-off.
Well, and this is what I'm saying, that I, I'd mean it's either all yes or all no or you have some kind of rubric, we don't currently have it, but I like to think we could develop one. And, um, I'm also of the belief that, like, I, I understand the cost and the parking, but it's, it's hard to estimate the benefits, but they're really great benefits. You could put a dollar figure on if you could. I mean, A is visitation, which is significant. And B, Oxford in the summertime and the quality of life at an event like this enables, uh, but I think those things are harder to estimate. And so we can see the cost more clearly than we can see the benefits. I'm all for waiving it, but let's develop a, a rubric and soon, so we can stop having this conversation each time. And, yeah, that would be mine.
Given that, that waiving it, you know, we are gonna have other people asking us. Would, would, waiving half of it, I mean, is there anything wrong with saying we're gonna split, split it in half this year to be better than, than having them pay the full amount? Is that making it more complicated? Can I get some input on that from staff?
Well, you know, that's one solution. There's no right or wrong solution. You know, like I said, I favor, uh, charging everybody. You know, because if you think about it, it, maybe it provides some incentive for not taking all that parking. I mean, when the, the Wine Festival takes up those spaces, I mean, during the Wine Festival, it's crowded. People have, wanna park real close to the festival. And when we closed off High Street, we lost that revenue. And, uh, you know, so we could do fifty percent, but I would suggest then that when the Porsche comes forward, we only charge them half. And, uh, you know, they've always paid the full boat willingly. I don't know that they've ever asked to have it waived, but certainly the, what's the name of the other car show? The Masonic Lodge, they, they've always asked.
I would think that, um, if we don't come up with a prioritization system or a rubric system, that we should say that a year from now or whatever date that everybody pays. That way we don't continue doing something that some people might perceive as unfair. So we either find a way to fairly resolve this in X amount of time or we agree to go wholesale one way or another.
I guess, I guess the challenge I see is, it, it's only two thousand right now, but two thousand is a lot of hotel rooms for the cold shelter. Or it's a lot of, which is, you know, there's just other things that I could imagine as far as our, our, our deep priorities that, um, I don't know if, especially if there's already fairness concerns, it's challenging for me to say, this is, yes, of our council priorities, we want to waive parking. So it's a little bit hard for me to say as a one-off, especially with staff having concerns and finances will continue to get a little bit more tricky going forward. And this event is kicking butt and growing every year. It's really hard to say, why is this event the one to subsidize?
What could also be that we're partnering with an organization that takes the primary lead in organizing it. I mean, we've done our own things. When we organize an event, I'm sure it's, it takes a lot more staff time. So what we have is a, a third party that's willing to activate our public space and, and take the responsibility of planning it and the food trucks and, and our contribution and partnership is the, is the waiver, among other costs. So, I mean, to me, it's an, it's, it's a, it's an investment in someone being excited and organizing an event in our town that we don't have to organize ourselves. So, yeah, I understand. I mean, I think one can look at the comprehensive plan, there's plenty of justification for it also with public placemaking and so forth. Anyway, I mean, I'm super grateful for the Chamber for organizing an event that showcases the city of Oxford. And if this is our partnership with this, among other costs, I just, I see a lot of benefit, even if it's harder to put, but anyway, that's where I'm coming from.
I assume we all see a lot of benefit. The holy question is, don't they all have a lot of benefit? We're back in full circle, so.
I kind of agree. I think I'm, I'm okay with waiving this, but we need to figure it out.
Yeah.
Whether it's a certain number of slots or fifty percent or, or something, but, and I think we can.
Yeah, I would be okay waiving it this year, but not going forward. We need a system to resolve this, I think.
I mean, I think as, as Oxford's probably longest-running festival, um, yeah, so.
So where are we, do we need a motion? I can't remember where we are.
Well, the resolution is to waive it.
The resolution is to waive it, yeah.
We're, okay, done with discussion? Okay, can we have, we're gonna have a voice vote, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Aye. Okay, it passes. Okay, we'll read the second resolution.
A resolution to accept the recommendation of the Recreation Board and authorize a letter of request to Butler County Regional Transit Authority for expanded transportation routes.
Do we have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Good evening again. Tonight I'm, I'm bringing forward a recommendation from the Recreation Board. We do have our new Parks Recreation Director with us, Mr. Chad Smith, but I didn't feel like it was fair to make him do this on his first night of work. So, the Recreation Board met in March of twenty twenty-five and made a formal recommendation to City Council to send a letter to the Butler County Regional Transit Authority, BCTRA, requesting an expanded seasonal bus route. As stated by the Recreation Board, the rationale for this proposed expansion is as follows. The goal of these expanded routes is to provide access to the Aquatic Center in the Knowles of Oxford and Locust Street Business Corridor. The community park and aquatic center is difficult to access to those without a motor vehicle in Oxford's largest senior community. The Knowles of Oxford do not have adequate access, access to be active members in our local economy. The addition of this expanded route will solve these issues. Currently, the city provides no financial support to BCTRA. Miami University has a contract with them for their Miami-Oxford routes. Any resident on the county can ride BCTRA for free. Mr. Jacob Young, the Chair of the Rec Board, is here to explain their recommendation.
Evening Vice Mayor and, uh, council members. So again, I did meet with the executor, Executive Director of the BCRTA on April fourth and discussed everything, uh, listed by Jessica before. Again, these destinations are more than just stops. They're central to Oxford health, wellness and community spirit. Many residents, especially seniors and individuals without reliable transportation, face significant challenges in accessing them. And truthfully, our destinations and options do fall short. I mean, past McGuffey Avenue, we've, we've gotten rid of all public transportation. And truthfully, during the, the springs, mostly summer and part of the fall, the amenities that we provide on the very western side of our town are extraordinary. You can look up Public Pool and we are the top search in all of Butler County. The seasonal route would, uh, close the gap practically in a community-centered way. It would provide constant access to recreation for families, teens above the ages of thirteen and seniors alike, most notably those in the Knowles of Oxford. A stop here would offer seniors a greater mobility and independence, empowering them to remain active and engaged, not just physically, but socially and economically by participating. Once you're at Kroger, you, you can go almost anywhere. There's so many different bus routes that all link to that same location. Ultimately, it's more than just transportation. It's about opportunity, it's about equity, and it's about making sure that everyone in Oxford is a full participant in community life. So I can't say that we have our full support. We did a couple months ago, but I, I hope it does remain similar. So thank you for your time and consideration on this matter.
I do want to clarify that a yes vote on this resolution would be to just send, you know, to send their letter. It, it would not be agreeing to any sort of financial agreement, but we did learn after, you know, their conversation that any expanded route would have a fiscal cost to the city of Oxford upwards of fifty thousand dollars. So, um, I think that would be a further conversation if we actually wanted to implement something in the result of this letter.
Any public comments? Seeing none, council discussion?
Well, I think we all agree that this is probably a good thing. We all knew at some point we will have to put some skin in the game on this and maybe this is the start of that discussion.
I don't think there's anything wrong with sending the letter, seeing, seeing the response that we get and then, you know, baby steps and if you build it, I don't know.
That, that's how I view it. Um, the letter can hurt, see if there's, you know, support the other side. And then, um, we could try it out for a year, put our money towards it, see how much it's used, whether it's worth it, maybe change if necessary, if we even get that far.
So I, I think that we have to be honest with ourselves. Um, I really appreciate, uh, Mr. Young bringing this up. The city of Oxford, we went down a pathway of concentrating the recreational amenities on one side of town that also happens to be the highest-income part of town and the most distant from lower-income residents. And, and we knew when we were doing that. The tri-location was a central location, it, it was readily accessible and, and we as a community decided we couldn't find a way to do the pool there, so we put it at the community park. It's, it's not BCRTA's problem to solve it. But it, it, it could, through partnership with BCRTA, be solved. Currently, the funding model for BCRTA is funded operationally one hundred percent from student fees. And so if they don't serve parts of the community that don't serve students, we can't be peeved at BCRTA. But, uh, you know, I've long advocated finding a way to have skin in the game and to be a partner with BCRTA so that we can have transit service that serves the people who need it. And if this is the road that gets us to go down it, it's difficult, but, you know, um, I, I could be wrong, but, you know, we, CDBG money, I believe, can be applied towards transit operations and I'm not sure if that's a way for us to, to think about. Again, it will compete with other priorities, but, you know, for all the equity reasons, I think it's just not fair where our pool is relative to the communities who could really benefit from it. BCRTA, along with the trail, is the best solution. So, yeah, let's, let's start the conversation and, and let's hear back from what B, what BCRTA says. But I think we have to be thinking about if we want to put skin in the game, where that would come from. We've never had a, 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 a source, I mean, I think the one time we, we, we did, Steve Day and I sponsored something, ten or twenty thousand dollars, and we bought like a, an iPad setting and that was like the only money we've ever put towards BCRTA. I would really love for us to be a partner with BCRTA so that we could have a say on where the routes go.
And it looks like Jessica had some comments about, no?
I thought you were asking me a question, so I just.
Oh, no, I didn't know if you had like an initial response for the CDBG money.
I, I don't without doing research, sorry.
Okay, all right. Okay, so all in favor of just sending the letter? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll move on to the next resolution.
A resolution accepting the recommendation of the Housing Advisory Commission to work with Empower Me Living and Inclusive Housing Resources to develop fifty-two thirty-four Hester Road and instructing the city manager begin negotiations to prepare development and purchase agreements.
Motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
All right, Jessica?
Good evening again. In January twenty twenty-five, the city issued a request for proposals for an affordable housing development on five-two-three-four Hester Road. Four firms, excuse me, four firms submitted proposals. Empower Me Living, Gain Utra LLC, Habitat for Humanity of Greater Cincinnati and Homeful. The scoring committee consisted of members of city staff and the Housing Advisory Commission and members shared both their scoring and their rank of each proposal. Based on this review, they had two finalists, Empower Me and Habitat for Humanity. Those two top-ranked applicants, Empower Me and Habitat, had strong experience and initial funding to get their project started. Both top-ranking applicants proposed income-aligned housing and supportive programming. The committee asked city staff to interview, followed with finalists, and we interviewed both top candidates and asked for additional information. Based upon the review of their responses, interviews, and interviews, the staff recommended to the Housing Advisory Commission to advance with Empower Me Living and their partner, Inclusive Housing Resources. The Housing Advisory Commission accepted this staff recommendation on Thursday, April seventeenth, to advance Empower Me Living proposal to City Council. And so I have here tonight, Empower Me Living, and they have a small presentation to share with you. So give me just a minute to get my click share back on. Sometimes I have to like, oh, look, it worked, okay. Emily, anything?
Thank you. Hi, good evening. Thank you so much for having us here tonight. We're honored to be here. Yes, Emily's gonna grab some posters and renderings. I'm Emily Kendall, my husband Marcus here with me. We're the co-founders of Empower Me Living. We have a five-year-old son, Luke, who has Down Syndrome, and we also have professional experience and expertise in commercial construction and commercial real estate, where we've spent the majority of our careers. We are driven by a personal passion to change the housing landscape for adults with intellectual and developmental disabilities, from one that has very limited options to one that has a wide range of neuro-inclusive housing choices that meet the needs and preferences of adults with ADD. So when we got this proposal, we immediately thought of our connection, Rachel Andrew. Up until recently, Rachel worked in the dining hall at Miami University. She lived at home with her parents and commuted every day from Middletown. A forty-five to ninety-minute commute each way, on top of an eight-hour shift at work. Having supportive housing closer to her job would have enabled Rachel to be much more successful. Rachel is not alone. There are over two hundred and ninety thousand of our fellow Ohioans that have intellectual and/or developmental disabilities. That is four times the capacity of Paycor Stadium down in Cincinnati. There are seventy-seven thousand adults with intellectual and developmental disabilities that live with caregivers over the age of sixty. That is two times Fred C. Jaeger Stadium over on campus. The loss of primary caregiver is the number-one reason an adult with ADD becomes unhoused, which means that tens of thousands of our fellow Ohioans are one heartbeat away from housing instability. Thus, we decided to do something about it. And we combined the great resources of the teams with me tonight to come up with a solution that we submitted to you in our request for proposal, which is a very unique concept and will be one of the first of its kind in Ohio. And I think that meets a lot of the criteria and your priorities for the city. And I'm gonna turn it over to Gina Gemm, my colleague from Inclusive Housing Resources, to talk a little bit more about the project.
Hi, good evening. I'm Gina Gemm. I'm the CEO of Inclusive Housing Resources. Just real briefly about who we are and what we do, so you can see how we play in all of this. Inclusive Housing Resources serves Hamilton, Butler and Claremont Counties, providing housing primarily for individuals with developmental disabilities through our partnerships with the local county boards. All of that currently is through rental housing. I have twenty years of experience, though, in affordable housing and have experience across the whole spectrum of affordable housing types. So we're excited to be able to be part of a homeownership, um, project here, which is nice because a lot of individuals with developmental disabilities don't have that opportunity. A lot of individuals with developmental disabilities are living at fifty percent or less of area median income. So, um, for them, often homeownership is out of, out of reach. There are a lot of things happening in Ohio. There are stable accounts that allow them to have ways of getting income in and using that for things like homeownership. And the nice thing about homeownership is when someone has, like, social security, that is not an asset that counts against them. So it kind of prevents them from being held back from building assets. So this is a really exciting opportunity for individuals in the developmental disability community.
Hi, my name's Emily Lovers. I'm a senior project architect at MSP Design, and I just want to talk for a couple minutes about the houses that we are proposing. So we have some boards behind us as well. But so what we're proposing is up to 16 400 to 800 square foot units that are customizable to the person purchasing each house. And they are designed in what we're calling modular but better. So all of the units are designed using a kit of parts. So essentially, every part, the kitchen, the bedroom, the, whether there's a garage, an office, all of those are standardized, which is what allows us to drive the cost down. And another unique thing is these are designed to be adaptable within the community. So this is kind of what we are anticipating fits with Oxford and the aesthetic here. But they can be, what's so great about them is they can be customized depending on what neighborhood or where they're located. So they're also scalable and modular. So what we're currently proposing is individual units, but we can look at townhomes in groups of two. We are proposing 16 in that we know that we want to leave space for amenity space, detention. I know the site is relatively flat, but we do still want to account for the detention within the site and then also amenity space, utilities, things like getting fire trucks in and out if we need to, things like that. So this is our preliminary plan, but we're looking forward to working with the city on really finalizing that and what it's gonna look like.
And these ones are universally designed, which means they're accessible for everyone. And part of the benefit of this project is that we are going to target aging family caregivers and their loved ones with intellectual and developmental disabilities so that they can move into the community together and help ease that transition from living outside of the family home. And that doesn't have to happen during a crisis situation. So these are meant to be accessible, which is really exciting. And again, it's a unique prototype that really hasn't been done before, but we think will add a lot, a lot to the city of Oxford. So we thank you again for your time, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Are there any public comments? All right, seeing none, council discussion? Can I ask a couple, a couple questions? It's similar to questions I've asked to other people who've come and spoke to us. I guess the, do you know, it's so hard because we know a lot of people in our, and you mentioned someone, right, that works here and commutes from Middletown. It's hard when there's a lot of people here that don't have housing, and they're struggling with really safe homes that they can afford. And so I kind of like cringed a little bit about like moving people into the community for the specific housing, because I know a lot of people are already struggling right here. That was one. Maybe that's more a comment, not a question. And then the other question is, what is the, like, this property is so precious that it's scary to me to think that it would be with this development and doing this amazing purpose for one sale, what will happen once that house is sold?
Yeah. If I may, we have a couple, I have a couple of comments. We asked similar questions. One is Talawanda has a Grade 23 program where they practice independent living, and they have a condo where they practice. And so we would love to work with Talawanda's program and those, they're adults, they're adults and their families, and see if this would be a program for them. And then second, the vote yes on this today is to begin the negotiations of a development agreement, but we've already asked a question. We need long-term affordability, and it would be set for a period of, like, probably 15-plus years in alignment with some of the other funding that would be coming in for this. So there would be a long period of affordability. And I believe Inclusive Housing Resources would be the monitor of, you know, any future sales and turnover.
And if there, if there's any mechanisms that could have this in perpetuity, right? Like, we want this as permanent as possible. When I look at other states that have specific projects that they are not meant for just 20 years or 25, like, how do we, how do we try to make this as long-term as possible? Because getting another opportunity like this, we don't know if we're ever gonna have it again. So if y'all are, if this is where we're gonna go, we just want this to be, like, let's do this forever, you know?
That makes sense. Thank you for those comments. I think the example of Rachel was someone that works here in your community but can't, she would add so much to your community, but she can't find a place to live here. But she's, it's really hard for adults to find good employment, and she was able to find that here at Miami. But then the housing piece just didn't come into place. But as Jessica said, we would plan to work with Talawanda Schools. And then Leanne Emmons is here from Butler County Board of Developmental Disabilities, and they work with families and provide supports. So just to be clear, four of the homes will be set aside for adults with intellectual and developmental disabilities. And we have in our proposal a mechanism to preserve those units, to ensure that four are always set aside for adults with developmental disabilities. You have to think about, our son Luke, he's five, and he could live, he could need housing for 30 years. And he will likely live until he is 60. He will outlive us. He's gonna need a long-term place to stay. I think Gina hit the highlights of homeownership. Part of our proposal to preserve this community is having a land-amenium association that will help with maintenance and upkeep of the common areas and spaces and help set aside a fund if someone needs help with some capital repairs inside of their home. So the idea to help preserve the units and ensure that people can stay there long-term is something that's really important to us. But this is meant to be a neuro-inclusive property, so it's some for people with ADD, some for everybody to have an opportunity. But it's designed here for Oxford residents. And then there will be mechanisms in place. For example, the management of the land-amenium association, working with Inclusive Housing Resources to preserve the affordability. And then a mechanism potentially for a right of first refusal. So if someone cannot remain in that home, either Empower Me Living or Inclusive Housing Resources would have the right to purchase that home from them. And that way, we can ensure that it's preserved for its long-term affordability use.
I mean, I just want to thank, I was, you know, I was skeptical when we kind of stepped away from the last proposal because I just didn't, you know, it was like, felt like a bird in the hand versus a bird in the bush because we just didn't know. I was excited to see that there were four proposals that came forward so quickly. I really want to thank everyone in the Housing Advisory Commission who took the time and staff to review and interview. And so I have so much trust that they were all weighing the pros and cons of these different proposals. There are a lot of things to think about. I'm with Vice Mayor Ragoo in terms of like, we have to hit on as many of our goals as we can in terms of the affordability and inclusivity. And so, and making sure that it's for the long-term because, yeah, we, we're not gonna have the opportunity to have pieces of property like this again in the future. So, I mean, I think to go in the conversation, it's gonna be a two-way conversation about what the development agreement is in order to optimize the benefit. I mean, it's not gone through the planning process. I'm assuming the 16 units is a rough estimation of what, based on development and zoning. But, you know, I'm a person who's like, if we can optimize the units on the land, you know, I hope we look at what we can do that within the, within our, while being true to our code. So, you know, I want to get the most out of this opportunity. So I'm really interested to hear, because I have not been part of it, but it is, it's hitting on a variety of different target groups, not just exclusively. So that's wonderful. I just think, like, I think Miami University, I mean, I wish Miami University would partner on something like this because I think it's a great benefit to its workforce, like the person you mentioned. So thank you for putting in, you know, the proposal in for the passion behind the project, the vision. I hope that it can be as good as it looks.
And I know negotiations still need to happen, but what will be the city's role after negotiations are done? Like, is there any long-term city control or oversight?
Or those are things we can hammer out during the, during the development agreement process.
I just, I'm real nervous about letting go of that land, you know? So that is my main concern, is that we want this to be affordable housing, I would say, forever. So what can we do to try to maintain that forever and not just like one generation?
Noted, and we'll see what we can do.
Awesome.
I appreciate, though, the thinking toward trying to make sure that the units are accessible by emergent, for emergency vehicles and keeping that in mind when you think about density. I think that's really important. As a speech-language pathologist, I really appreciate the insight into looking to have housing that serves people with developmental disabilities. The size of the units, I think, are fine. I mean, when I was doing my PhD, I lived in a condo that was 623 square feet. It might sound small, 400, it was, you say, four?
400.
To 800. But depending on the needs of the individual, it can be a comfortable setting. So I'm excited. We talked about this at Housing Advisory last week, Thursday. So, yeah, thank you for your presentation. It was well done.
Yeah, this is fantastic. I'm super excited. I would just echo the points already made that I would love to get as many, you're doing good, so let's do as much good as we possibly can, fit as many units in there as we can, and to maintain affordability in perpetuity would be fantastic. As long as we, especially going back to as many units safely. But of course, we always have our fire experts weigh in on that, or Fire NMS. And the only other thing I was gonna say is, we had four great proposals, two of them that really stuck out. I would love to go forward with this one. And then also, if Habitat's wanting to work with us, we have another property, the Western Knolls. I would love to.
Forty-seven acres.
That's right. I would love to do both of these, so we don't even have to pick between. We get to do both. Just throwing that out there.
I just wanted to say that I'm glad we can consider, you know, some varied housing types because I do have demently disabled folks on campus that work with me, and none of them drive. They probably won't drive. And I also know, because one of them confided in me last week where he lives in Oxford and that they raised his rent again to $750 a month, and he's really struggling with that, even though he has vast support from his in-town parents, it still weighs on his mind. So hopefully, we can move forward and everything everybody said can come to fruition. So I got my fingers crossed.
Great. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll move on to the next resolution.
A resolution accepting the recommendation of the Public Art Commission of Oxford and authorizing the release of a call for art for a mural installation at the City of Oxford Public Parking Garage.
Motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Jessica Show.
I know. I was out the last meeting, so, you know, now I can put it all out at once. I have to get my staff report, I'm sorry. Okay. The Oxford Comprehensive Plan has an objective to promote parks, arts, and culture throughout the community. And one of our action items is to encourage creative placemaking for a more engaging community and visitor experience. At the January 2025 City Council Retreat, councilors learned that the Locust Street mural that we were talking about was gonna be postponed until at least 2026 because of a delay from Duke Energy. They then discussed possible late mural locations, and at the recommendation of the Public Arts Commission, councilors indicated some interest in the municipal parking garage. The public parking garage is a highly visible, prominent location in our community. After discussions with the city manager and service director, it is advised that the mural be installed on a panel-type system and not painted directly onto the brick surface. The Public Art Commission met and reviewed a call, a draft call for art, which is attached, and the commission recommended to the council that we proceed with a call for art for a mural to be installed on the parking garage. The goal for the arts installation would be fall of 2025. And happy to answer any questions.
And then Sean's the only public, so I'll just keep looking at you if you ever want to say anything. Just pop up. Any council discussion?
Motion to adopt?
Oh, my God. Motion to adopt? Wait, no, you did that.
Did we? Okay.
Okay, council discussion.
We've had robust conversations about this at Paco meetings, looking at the, you know, if it's, if the mural ends up being high up near the top, it actually would have very good visibility in town, depending on where you are. But we're excited about it. We understand staff's concerns about painting directly on brick. And there have been great murals posted at big cities and small towns on various panels. And so we didn't have a problem meeting, meeting staff and their concerns where it comes to that point. So we're excited about it. We hope we get some good submissions.
Yeah, I'm really excited about the layout. I really like it. I think it'll have a lot of visibility, and it'll be very cool because it's sort of in two dimensions, so you can do a lot with that if you're an artist.
That kind of corner, we've talked about for a long time because people have trouble finding our parking garage. And we had talked about painting parking on the side of the building right there. So this piece of art could be a landmark to help people find the garage. So I really like that.
Just, I love this. Just as a reminder, I see that it's, there's like a compensation per square foot. And so do we have an adorable source of funding for future? I can't remember how we're budgeting for public art in our budget.
You did put into the but, the capital budget this year a stipend or an amount for this mural. And so, and then Paco does have an annual amount that council gives to it for its operation. So we would have a life expectancy of 10 years for this art that would, ideally, would not require any maintenance. But that is part of the artist contract when we work with them. To be clear, this is a request for qualifications. And the way it works is we get all kinds of ideas for art that are just kind of black and white drawings from anyone. And then the Paco and a team of people meet, and then they select their finalists. Those finalists are then paid a small stipend to create a color, full-color example, and a rendering of what it would look on the, look like on the garage. And then we then review and pick our finalist and then proceed with negotiations on price and contracts and stuff like that with that selected artist. In our community, unlike some other communities, we expect that artist to kind of do the full implementation. Some larger cities will hire the artist and then hire a whole team of painters to do like the other work. But we're not that big, and we don't have that capacity nor staff to manage that. And so we're asking the artist to be the lead contractor in the implementation. It worked well when we did our one along the trail, and we are hoping to use the same model for this.
And just so that, I mean, I don't, how does one estimate the per-square-footage cost on, for example, a vertical, this could, they could paint it horizontally, it could be hung vertically. Does that, do we have a sense whether that's enough to get?
Yeah, this is a standard price for murals that are.
Okay.
Yeah, in the Midwest, yeah.
Super exciting.
Yeah. I mean, I know, Amber, you're just one person, but you and Paco are just doing your.
It's a whole team.
Full steam ahead. So it's so exciting.
Ashley and, yeah.
And I know y'all, y'all know this, but as far as why you're pushing for it, but studies have shown that colorful cities make you happy and more relaxed. And so it has benefits that are just, will last for so long.
I have a former student who got her undergrad degree in speech pathology and audiology, but she's done a graduate degree in the UK in translational health medicine, and she's worked for public nonprofits on the intersection of public health and art. And so we do know that cities that have good public art also have good health outcomes. We know that it helps with traffic calming when it's on streets, but also just being able to see colorful things in your community creates good placemaking, but also lends itself to good public health. So.
Cool. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, pass this next motion, next resolution.
A resolution accepting the bid and authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Benchmark Land Management LLC for the construction of road, drainage, and sidewalk improvements on South Locust Street at a cost of $430,709 plus a contingency in the amount of $43,070.90 for a total cost not to exceed $473,779.90.
Motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Hey, Mike?
Good evening. The city council is budgeted for these stormwater and sidewalk improvements, mainly on the east side of Locust, South Locust Street, and also for missing sidewalk segments on South Locust at Brookview Court. The city developed plans for this, including 470 feet of culvert stormwater pipe that will go in front of the Duke Substation and in front of Goodwill. That area will have fill put in, and that's where a new sidewalk will be constructed. The project also includes 738 feet of new sidewalk along the east side of South Locust and also down at Brook.
The project also includes 738 feet of new sidewalk along the east side of South Locust and also down at Brookview Court. There will be two new crosswalks installed with high-visibility markings crossing South Locust. One on the north side at Collins, and then one also on the south side of Brookview Court. And there'll be rapid flash beacons installed at both of these crosswalks. So the city advertised for bids for this, and the three bids came in very competitive with each other. The low bid was from Benchmark Land Management. We've not worked with them directly in the past, but they've had good references, and we're ready to proceed with them. I'd like to congratulate the Engineering Division and Scott Otto, again, for getting grant for this project. They have a grant from ODOT, from the Systemic Safety Program. That will pay for 300, approximately $388,000 of the project. So our local exposure for this is very small. If we do not dip into the contingency, the local expense is only 10% of the project. Thanks to Scott and Engineering for obtaining that grant for us. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Any public comments? Say none. Council discussion?
So exciting. I mean, Locust Street is such a powerful, like, it's at the center of our community, but that portion of Locust Street just divides our community rather than brings it together. I just, you know, I have seen kids walking to Kramer on that east side along the power, you know, up and over the railroad tracks, and I'm like this. And it, it just, you can see from the goat path along the side of the road there that pedestrians use it against the odds. So the idea of having just sidewalks on both sides of Locust Street, at least, you know, for that portion, I think this is part of, Mr. Perry, I know we're, we're working on bicycle pedestrian plan that could involve in the future, fusal additional improvements to Locust Street based on the outcome of that plan. But this is such a powerful step in the right direction. So thanks to you, thanks to Scott Otto for finding a grant. This is sometimes we're like, how are we gonna do something? And then you, you price it out, and you get the grant. And then our cost exposure is, we're gonna get a lot of bang for our buck. So thank you.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We will move on to our first ordinance.
Heidi, oh, sorry, go ahead. I got excited to see Heidi. Please go. An ordinance amending ordinance number 3783, supplemental budget ordinance number three, to make supplemental appropriations for fiscal year 2025.
Motion to adopt?
All right, is this just the first reading?
Yes.
It's first.
Okay, Heidi.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and councilors. I'm bringing it forward tonight as supplemental appropriation ordinance for the fire tax, I'm sorry, the fire and EMS property tax levy. When we first passed the budget anticipating these funds coming in for the fire fund, we did not anticipate the fees that would be associated in charge by the county to collect these. So we're asking that you appropriate that money, and then we will continue to watch to, to realize how much is actually going to be transferred towards the end of the year with our dedicated 1.27 million that we anticipate to transfer. We also had an additional, so then, in 2024, when we did the project, the 2025 budget, we projected to spend some of the CDBG funds for 2024 projects that did not get spent. So that money would now, in 2025, need to be appropriated so that we have the funds in appropriation to expend those funds this year.
Any public comment? Council discussion? Okay, roll call? No, they're not... Long story, backstory. Okay, no second readings. I will move on to remarks. So Doug?
Thank you. I've been tracking the House Bill 15, a wide-ranging energy measure that included a community energy pilot program. And I'm sad to say that the Senate removed this community energy pilot from the final version of the bill, which the House concurred and sent to the governor for his signature on April 30th. It's disappointing since community energy can be deployed on the distribution system side, avoiding large-scale transmission projects that take years to plan, permit, and construct. Also, it is more efficient to have energy generated in the state of Ohio since the energy does not have to travel as far, and there is less energy line loss. Ohio needs more energy, especially clean energy, generated in the state since Ohio purchases 20 to 25% of its electricity from other states and Canada. The Community Energy Pilot Program would have added distributed energy resources to our grid, enhancing Ohio's energy independence and resilience. So sad to say that it wasn't included in the bill that was sent to the governor. On our water treatment plant softening improvements, I've been communicating with the engineer reviewing it. Last week, he said it was, the plans were 80% complete, the review of those plans, EPA. He expected to have them finalized by this week. So hopefully, that'll occur, and then we can begin the, putting the bid package together and bidding it out. Once again, the construction cost is estimated to be about $19 million for this project. So it's a major, very important project for the city. Last thing that I want to mention is, we've now reached an tentative agreement with both property owners regarding Phase 5 of the Oxford Area Trail. We need to work out the agreements, and then we'll be bringing those in. The agreements will be contingent upon city council approval. So over the next several meetings, we'll be bringing the agreements in. I did send out to council a note that, you know, we had scheduled a special meeting on June 9th to approve a contract for construction of Phase 5. We learned from ODOT that they wanted us to move that date up to, to an earlier date. So as you know, we had planned to cancel our first meeting in June, which is June 3rd. So now we're looking to cancel that June 17th meeting, excuse me, June 9th meeting, and schedule a June 3rd meeting. So Jason said that he might not be there, but I, I guess I need to know that at least four council members will be there because Bill will be absent, David will be absent, and then possibly Jason. So that leaves us four council members. So Alex is not here tonight, but assuming that Amber, Chantel, and Michael be here, we'll check with, with Alex because it'll be very important. We're on a tight, tight schedule. Basically, what they did was, they moved up the cutoff date for awards and encumbrances this year, and we need to meet that schedule. So that's all I have this evening. Thank you.
All right, Mike?
Nothing tonight, yes.
JJ?
As I'm sure you've heard this past Friday, while directing traffic at the UC commencement, Deputy Larry Henderson was tragically struck by a vehicle and died as a result. After serving 33 years with the Hamilton County Sheriff's Office, he had just recently retired and was working in special detail. That's why we're wearing our mourning badges. His funeral will be later this week, I believe Friday. Just ask that you keep Hamilton County and his family and your thoughts and prayers. And I'm just using that opportunity to talk about next week, this Police Week, where we celebrate law enforcement, and then we remember on May 15th, it's Peace Officer Memorial Day. So kind of that somber day where we were remembered of those who sacrifice and have given their life. And I, I bring all that up, and it's been a while since I've been here to counsel because at the last council meeting when we were here, I wasn't here, we kicked off a very challenging few weeks for public safety for some reason that night. We had our SWAT incident down on West High Street, just kudos to Lieutenant Robinson that night, and working with our SWAT team to bring that to an end that could have, could have went much differently. So they had a very successful resolution to that. And then it just seemed like since then, we haven't gotten any breaks. So here's hoping to the, to finish out this semester strong. But I'll be thinking about our officers, you know, and just praying for their safety, you know, as we finish this year. So just, as always, we appreciate council's support and, and allowing us to come here and publicly celebrate the swearing-in ceremony tonight. So thank you.
Heidi?
So the Finance Department is still working with the state auditors, and I just want to say thank you for everybody that completed the fraud questionnaire. I know it was a little chaotic trying to get that stuff in. And we're, we're finishing up the federal single audit with the State Auditor's Office, which is an audit of any federal money, grant money that is spent over $750,000. So I think it's great that Oxford continues to get all of this grant money and is able to, to have these single audits. And that, that number will jump to over 1 million next year. And so hopefully, we can continue to be in the federal single audit realm.
Special visitor.
So kind of on JJ's line of all the things that have happened in the last couple of weeks, I'm sure you're all aware. We had a fatal fire in Oxford Township two weeks ago tonight. I wanted to mention a couple of things. I wanted to thank JJ, Jeff, and Derek Carlson from the Police Department for helping us take care of some things on that scene that we didn't have the capacity to handle. The other thing I wanted to mention was that the following Friday, we had a critical incident stress management session with the folks that were there and some councilors. It went very well, and I want to thank Amber and Alex. They provided lunch for us that day. All the guys really appreciated that. So just wanted to pass that along. Have a good night.
Chad?
Hello. It's day two, and been hard at work. And I just want to first say thank you to Doug, and Jessica, and Kim Newton, and many others who helped with my onboarding experience yesterday, which consisted of a lot of touring and meeting everyone in various departments, a lot of them anyway. And I've spent the last day and a half or so getting to know the team out at the Oxford Parks and Rec Department, and been doing sort of a listening tour, if you will, and getting to see what they do every day, and then how we can work together. And I hope to be back here often with a lot more to say, and a lot more updates, and a lot more, you know, seeking permission for exciting things that we'll be doing in the future. So, but for those of you who I know, and for those of you who I've just met, sincerely, really happy to be here and look forward to working with everyone. So thank you.
Sam?
I wanted to give a shout out to the fire as well. While that event was going on that Chief DeTheris talked about, we had a training session at Miami where that Miami holds for education, required education for fraternity members. And one of the fraternity presidents had, had received a lot of citations in the past for violations of how the fraternity buildings were being operated, different, removing smoke detectors, those types of things. And so because of that, he was able to educate his fellow fraternity members of what not to do. So even though the fire staff were out on the call, their efforts were still being benefited from education. So just wanted to shout out there, and I know it's sometimes difficult for tenants and fraternity members that would receive citations, but it does have benefit for the future. And I wanted to thank you for the proclamation tonight, the May 28th event. Hopefully, we can have either Mayor Bill or yourself at that event to kind of share in that on May 28th. It's gonna be at the Arc Center, and there's gonna be some property owners in town who are going to be recognized for the preservation work that they've done on their properties. And so it should be a nice event, hopefully an annual event in the future. Thank you.
Jessica wants to keep talking.
I did speak a lot tonight, but I did want to just extend gratitude to both our Police Department and our Fire Division for their hard work and stressful work these past few weeks. Really, all of our hearts have gone out to them as they've dealt with really difficult situations. They deal with things that the rest of us don't have to. Then also, just wanted to share with council that today I attended Dr. Arbuckle's class for a presentation of three student groups who contracted with the City of Oxford to do a lot of research for us. One was on deer management strategies, one was on housing incentives, and another one was on tenant rights education. And all three groups did an excellent job, and we'll take pieces of their research and recommendations to be bringing forward to you as we look toward our, our future efforts in these areas. So just wanted to share that. I'm grateful to the university and the bright minds down the hill as well. So thank you.
Heather?
Nothing, thank you.
Chris?
Well, the theme today seems to be one to say thank you. So it's my turn now. Next weekend's gonna be a big day in our family because of our connection to Miami. Educators seem to be under attack for a variety of reasons. So I want to say thank you to those members of council, the support, your teaching, your, your efforts with the university, not as council members, but as a personal thanks for what you've done for my family.
All right. I got to fill in for the mayor last Friday at our annual Arbor Day tree planting, and I just wanted to say thanks to Parks and Rec and Dave Tree Levin for, for making that happen. We planted a tree in honor of Prue Dana and Sharon Edwards, and it was a very nice ceremony, so.
Amber?
Just grateful to be part of this community and thankful for all the hard work that staff does. I also had a great time at the Electric Root Festival. They had to do a hard pivot because it rained really hard on Saturday, and they shifted it to Armstrong. It was loud, a lot, loud music in Armstrong, but it was fun. And so even in hard times, there, there are some good times as well. And thank you, Chris, for what you've shared. It is, has been really hard to be an educator right now. But, you know, the students make what I do such a joy. And I'm very proud of two of my students who are graduating, Julia and Sophie, who both completed a thesis. It's my first time having two thesis students at the same time. It was a lot of work, but very rewarding. And congratulations to all of the Miami graduates, and good luck on finals coming up very soon.
Jason?
Just keep fighting the good fight.
David?
You know, I want to echo the thanks. You know, I think in, in the House Fire, most of us were thinking immediately of the young man who should have been celebrating his graduation, and, and is not, and the, and the loss to that family. But it, it just took me a little while because we just take for granted that people will race to those events. And, and but what I, you know, it dawned on me too late to do the nice thing that you and Alex did is that when you're trained to save people and structures and you can do neither, must be really, really, really hard. And so I want to express my, you know, special gratitude to those people who, who rush to those events and, and you, and hope for the good outcome, and sometimes you, you, you can't get that win. And I'm sure that that weighs really, really heavily on those folks. So that's a special part of that job that, again, we, we don't, in our ordinary life, don't have to deal with. But I, on, on the brighter note, I do appreciate the thanks. I was thinking about, this is the time of year. I sat in on, on Professor Arbuckle's presentations, talking about deer management, how, how we can get more affordable for, for staff members to live here, renters' rights. And, you know, my students from last year presenting on how to rethink some of our traffic safety issues. And then two weeks ago, we had a great session about Uptown alleys and trying to think about how to improve our Uptown alleys, beautify them, public safety and placemaking. We had really a great, robust turnout of folks from, you know, business owners and, and board members. And yeah, so, Chris, we really appreciate what you say. It's a privilege to be an educator, and, and, and for us to be able to connect with students and in a way that we hope benefits the students, but also benefits us. I mean, Oxford's the town it is. We do a lot complaining about the students because they're bad, you know? But it's like, it, our town is enriched because of that relationship. And yeah, and I don't know what our legislators think, but our universities provide great value to the communities and to the state of Ohio. And if they can't see it, maybe they should go to Miami University. They didn't already.
I have a couple of comments and then a question, which doesn't have to be answered right now. And thank you to the first responders. I mean, y'all run into the burning buildings, the danger. You put yourself at risk all the time in ways that most of us are just too cowardly to do. So thank you so much for that. And throughout all the just crappy things that have happened over the past four weeks, there have been two of the tenants that were, we, I'd interacted with initially are now deceased for various reasons. And it's, it's hard to see so many different community members that live such different lives just across the street. that live such different lives just across the street. And so, I mourn for these people, I mourn for the poor high school student, I mourn for the police officer, I mourn for Hinton's son, and at the same time, throughout that horrible incident where the SWAT was being called in, and y'all did not shoot and kill anyone, and I am so grateful for that, and I, I praise your leadership at all levels that, that does not, that hasn't happened, and thank you so much because violence on both sides is never justified, and I'm so appreciative. So, those are my comments, and the other one is that in light of kind of revisiting what we had talked about kind of before, four years ago, how, how do we have kind of a, a discussion about like what will happen, about our police interacting with ICE or kind of plans going forward? I know we had talked about before that there wasn't a contract when we talked about this four years ago, what that kind of looks like in the future, just trying to envision what our future might look like as things change. And again, we don't need an answer, but I just, I really respect y'all, and I'm really proud of the police we have, and I know that we will keep our neighbors safe, so I'm just very, I'm, I'm anxious to see kind of what that looks like and how we will respond in basically a time of crisis. So, may we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Awesome. All in favor?
Aye.